I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville to order on Tuesday, February 12th, 2013 at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with roll call.
Barbara Doss?
Present.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Dick Bonin?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Michael Deleke?
Here.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
And Steve Becker has been excused.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing regarding ordinance 13-03. This is the Chapter 22 zoning code amendment specifically alterations to parking regulations. And we'll begin with staff presentation.
Okay, this is an ordinance makes several suggested changes to the zoning ordinance related to parking. This would be private onsite parking, not street parking. The ordinance has already always had regulations regarding parking, but there's several areas that we're taking a look at and making suggested changes to. The first one is to reduce the minimum parking stall width from 10 feet to nine feet. And actually, this is actually more in conformance with what's commonly built. We measured a bunch of parking lots and there are quite a few out there right now that are at nine feet. So this is actually bringing it more into conformance with the norm. The code is recommending some minimum bicycle parking requirements for new development. Currently, the code does not have any regulations regarding bike parking. The proposal has a requirement for new parking spaces and driveways to be hard-surfaced. That would be all new parking and driveways and spaces. Right now, it's for commercial and industrial uses if there's five or more spaces and multifamily if there's five or more spaces. The code makes a recommendation for allowing the property owner to lease out parking spaces, basically if they have excess parking spaces on their business lot, if it's a non-residential property to users that are otherwise not associated with the property. Right now, the code really doesn't allow that. It's basically the parking is supposed to be for users of that property, the business or tenants. Code is making a recommendation to allow that as a conditional use permit. And then the other major change would be parking the downtown area. Essentially, right now, there are no minimum parking space requirements in the downtown area. So we're making a recommendation to include some. And basically, it would be at 75% of the standard requirements elsewhere in the community. There are some provisions. They can either provide that space onsite, they can do it offsite through a lease or other arrangement with other property owners in the area, or they can basically make a payment of a fee in lieu of providing that parking. And that amount of that fee in lieu of would have to be determined by the council and we'll bring that forward at a future date. But that's kind of a summary of the changes that we're looking at making. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. I need clarification. On number four, the code now allows leasing of parking lots and parking spaces in non-residential districts. Does this mean, does this allow me as a property owner to lease a spot on my personal prop, I mean, or is this restricted to somebody who has a business and a parking lot? Or can I lease parking lots and parking spaces in my own driveway to someone else?
This is intended for commercial, industrial areas, that if they have excess parking areas, parking spaces, that they can lease that out to basically anybody who wants to rent it. It's not intended for residential properties.
I understand that it's, but is it clearly restricted in residential properties?
It's for non-residential properties. And that would be as a conditional use permit. So that gives us the ability to look at if there's screening or surface improvements or landscaping that we'd like to include with that.
Under that conditional use permit, you'd notify adjoining landowners to a certain radius?
Correct. And it would go through the Plan Commission, the Recommendation, and the Council for final approval. So there'd be two public meetings that would be involved in that process.
Other questions for Joe?
I just, I think it's page 11 on my computer. I don't know what page it's going to be for you, but it's G and then four and then D. It says cinemas and movie theaters, one space for each, six is written, but in parentheses it says four.
Yes.
Seats.
Yeah, that's-
I figured that was a test just to see if I really read it.
That's not even a change. That's, that's been in there.
Been in there? Okay. Well, so I don't know whether it's six or whether it's four.
It's supposed to be six.
It's supposed to be six.
I do know that because I recall that from the millennium when they did some parking lot improvements.
Okay, and then I'd just like to go back to the leasing of spaces. I understand if it's residential, you cannot lease a space. The confusion might be and maybe it won't be, but I have a triplex and it's considered commercial, but it's residential.
Correct.
So even though it says commercial in our ordinance, it's residential, so the residential would-
Yeah, it would be based on the district. So it'd be a residential zoning district.
Okay.
Other questions for Joe?
I don't have a question, but I did want to point out that the council received a letter from the RDA in the first week of February. It didn't get into the packet, but there was a letter from the RDA to the council about the bicycle parking and requirements. As members of the RDA reviewed some of those parking requirements for bicycles, they seemed a bit excessive. It was hard to qua, to put quantities on all of them, but for instance, the one for hospitals, sanitariums, institutions, rest and nursing homes provided one space for every six beds, plus one space for every six employees, plus one space for every two physicians. And it was hard to come up with the number, but it seemed like for that particular use, that many bicycle spaces may be excessive. And there were some of the other specific, if you looked in 22, I think it all referenced 2209 section G that enumerated the different uses and then the different numbers of the uses. I mean, the funeral home was another one that seemed to be a bit excessive. And I don't even know how I would calculate the motor vehicle sale one that would require one space for every 1,600 square feet of floor space. So it seemed to me that, and I don't think that anybody in the RDA is opposing bicycle parking, it's, or provisions for bicycle parking, but it seemed like some of these, when the RDA actually looked at them, were pretty excessive.
When we were discussing this at the Plan Commission, we were kind of scratching our heads as well. And this is partly, you have to start somewhere. And this is pretty much where we started. And I think that it was understood that we'd look at this and maybe some of them are excessive. I'm thinking there probably aren't going to be that many people visiting people in nursing homes with bicycles, but you never know. I mean, people are getting healthier, they live longer, you never know.
I understand.
I don't know what the, you know, we've never done this before and so we're kind of flying blind here a little bit. And that's why you have public hearings, to find out where people think that we need to make alterations.
Well, in those cases, couldn't you just put a number of bicycles in a rack, like say 10 for the motor vehicle sales or rather than each 1,600 square foot of floors, floor area used? Seems maybe simpler just to state a number.
Yeah, I think what they were trying to do is, or at least the original draft was to produce something that says the larger business gets, the more demand you're going to need for that and quantify it that way. Maybe there's a better way to do it. We've never done the bicycle thing before here and so we're kind of just trying to see what we can do that doesn't make it onerous, but also allows for use of bicycles, which will free up parking, it'll free up traffic, it'll do a lot of good things if we can make that work, so.
And like I said, there was nobody in the RDA that was opposed to bicycle parking. It was just 10 spaces for every viewing room at a funeral home and I, you know, seemed, there were some that, you know, may seem to be a little bit excessive. And there's really, from what I could read in the ordinance, there's really no provision for, I don't know, appealing or-
Let me ask this question. If we pass this with the exclusion of the bicycle requirements tonight and ask the RDA to come back at the next meeting or whenever the next meeting is after the next RDA meeting with some kind of review of this, is that possible?
Well, I, you know, I don't know that this, I don't know that the RDA wants this on their agenda because we're really talking about redevelopment in the downtown area. So I don't think, it's just that as we were reviewing the final draft in terms of the parking for the downtown area, people read on down into the bicycle parking and said, did anybody put quantities on this and know how many, how many there really are as they went back and forth and started to quantify that? So I think that the RDA just wants to point this out, that there either should be some kind of appeal process, or there should be some kind of look at each one, you know, to try and put a quantity on these.
Just for comparison, I, the recommendation that I submitted to the Plan Commission was 10%. And most of the communities that I had looked at as guidelines, and one of them I got from actually the Safe Routes Committee, they were looking at the rules from Madison. Madison's, it's, there's a little bit of flexibility, but most of those were 10% of the bike parking requirements. Most communities I looked at were 5% to 10%. So I think 50% is significantly higher than what most other communities do require.
The car parking requirements?
Yeah. The bike would be 5 to 10% of the bike, of the car parking requirement.
And in this particular ordinance, it makes it 50% of the car parking requirement.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? No one indicated a desire to speak in favor or against, but we have two people who'd like to speak in general, Jack Ledkey and Mark Iam. If you'd come forward, state your name and local address and just know what you think.
Keep moving us closer to you.
Oh, I got pretty soon, I might just get in my chair.
My name is Jack Ledkey. I'm the Executive Director for the Main Street Program at 20 South 4th Street in Platteville. And I would just shut this off, so.
It's the little microphone that we hear.
Hello?
Can you?
Is it, it's not on, I don't think. I don't think I can read this very much either. It is just the support for what Alderman Doss was speaking about. The Main Street Program is in support of the effort to get the bike rack regulation in place in the downtown area. And we applaud the council's efforts to do something there. It's just that we feel that the percentage is, you know, grossly out of whack. These bike racks are not inexpensive items and for small businesses to put them in to meet that kind of code and then see one or two bicycles tied up to them is not a good representation of what we're trying to achieve. And it also, the council's effort also recognizes the fact that, yes, Platteville is a growing bicycling community and that part needs to be addressed. So we're glad that the ordinance is moving forward, but we would ask that you would reconsider that percentage and lower it to the initial percentage that was indicated by Mr. Carroll.
Be something like 10%?
10% seems to be a good starting point. And if the need obviously increases over the years, that percentage can be revisited and another rack can easily be added.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mark, have you put that maybe up on top of that? Does that work again?
No. I couldn't, I couldn't.
You have to bend down.
Anyway, Mark Iam is my name. And I guess I just want to draw your attention to what I believe is Section H, Item C. And that has to do with the .75 stalls for every bedroom that, in the downtown that is developed. Well, I just, I just worry out loud that it's going to end downtown second-floor level conversions from vacancy to residential. And I think it's going to put pressure on buildings next door for parking. They'll be sought for demolition. And when you, one of the beauty, beautiful things about our downtown is that it's, what's left of it is contiguous. And once you start getting that missing-tooth look, you know, unemployment goes up, businesses fail sooner, and you have a higher crime rate. So I get, my suggestion would be to, to keep what you have, but exempt the buildings that were on the original National Register of Historic Places from this parking requirement. Thank you.
I'd like to note one thing about that. We considered that as an issue in part. And you can also lease spots, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be right there contiguous because there are obviously some buildings you can't put parking on their lots, you just can't. There's no room. And so you could either lease them someplace else, and there's actually, Joe, you might want to maybe explain this a little better, a provision in there to pay a fee in lieu of doing even that. So I think we were, I think your comments are well taken, Mark, and I think we kind of acknowledged that there were going to be some difficulties with some of that and that we needed to provide an alternative so people could still do that development and not simply be excluded.
If I might say something, the RDA considered that and there were significant changes made in the, in this portion of the ordinance because at first, the parking space was be, required to be on the property. And now there are actually several ways that that can be, that parking requirement can be met. The parking space has to be located no more than 1,320 feet, which is a quarter mile, I believe, from the, from the building. And it can be leased from, and that's one of the reasons that there are some leasing in downtown parking lots now that are owned by the city to provide that opportunity. And then if that doesn't work, then like the President of the Council said, there is the opportunity for the building owner or the person who's doing that reconstruction to pay a fee in lieu of parking. So I think the RDA, which is also very concerned about continued development of the downtown and preservation of our historic components, felt that with these three different options that there was a way for people to be able to develop and still provide the parking.
Thanks. We're obviously segwaying into the council discussion portion of this, so is there other discussion? I personally would like to see us pull the bicycle stuff and maybe rework that a little bit, maybe improve the rest of it.
Did you want to, so you would rather rework it than to reduce the percentage to 10%, 5% or 10%?
Well, if-
Can you actually amend an ordinance at a public hearing?
Sure.
I didn't know.
Maybe if you think we should just start there with that and let it go and see how it works, which I'm in favor of doing, trying. You'd indicated in your memo about the idea of reviewing it, so.
Right. But I mean, I guess we didn't talk about reducing the percentages. We didn't know how tied in people were to those percentages, so.
Well, it was, it was the place to start.
Sure.
Any other discussion? We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved?
Second.
Killian got there first. A motion is second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Common Council action.
I move adoption of the ordinance through letter H. That would not include the bicycle parking at this point. And I would ask for the staff and for the, I guess, do I, so not H. But not H in 2209. Is 2205-4I-1 included in this? What is that? Is that in this?
What about this change in percentage?
Now, right now, I'm asking for adoption, all except for the bicycle parking. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt all but the bicycle section here. And I'm trying to make sure that at the very end of this, that we don't, you said all up to H, but not past that. I'm trying to make sure that we didn't have anything else that-
Throw H. Just exclude section I.
Yeah, excluding section I. Right.
Question, do we have to have another public hearing to work on the bicycle one?
I would think so.
I think that would be up to the council. I don't think it's required because if you've held the public hearing now, it'd be your choice if you wanted to hold another one or not.
Okay. Other questions?
Joe, I just have another question. This institutional uses of leased parking lots, that's not the same ordinance, that's 2205.
That, those are the changes that are necessary to allow the leased parking in those other districts as a conditional use? So that was one of the changes that I mentioned. It allows the leasing of parking spaces in non-residential areas.
I understand that, but then I think that right now, I've made an, a motion to adopt ordinance 22.09 through letter H. I have not said anything about 22.05.
It should be ordinance 13 point, 13-03 is the ordinance that you're adopting. That's just a section.
Dash 03.
Ordinance 1303.
It's, that's what's listed on it.
Excluding section.
Okay, okay.
So if you just do it excluding section H, then that gets us the other parts as well.
Okay.
That's what you intend to do.
Aye.
Patrice, that was, okay?
That's how I understood the motion.
Excluding I.
Excluding I.
2209I is the bicycle parking requirement.
Right, exclude that one.
Okay, excluding 2209I, bicycle parking. We have a motion and a second to pass the ordinance excluding that section. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jan, read it back to us, what we're voting on now.
Okay, Barb, may I? Motion to adopt ordinance 1303 excluding section 22.09 parent I, bicycle parking.
Roll call vote, please.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And can I further ask that the section creating bicycle parking be put on the agenda for, I don't know if you want to put it, go take it back to the Plan Commission, but that we revisit this within the next, not, probably not the next meeting, but the next time after a Plan Commission meeting, so we can get sort of-
We can bring it back to the Plan Commission, specific, make sure we have some direction for it. Specifically, you want to lower the percentages?
Right.
Say to 10%?
In some of these areas that, I mean, I, we didn't read all of them. But I think somebody needs to look through and say, how many parking spaces would that really be? And is that actually a feasible thing? And then come back. I don't know if staff wants to do that or-
Well, what we need to do is if people are concerned about specifics in it, we need to know them at the Plan Commission. Otherwise, you bring it here and we end up in the same place, so.
Right.
We know what Jack and Mark were talking about here. I think that it seems like everybody here is interested in lowering those requirements, so.
Right.
We simply could do that or drop it down to 10% and see what happens.
And we could talk about the fee also, the fee in lieu of-
Oh, that's on the-
I have no idea what the fee would be.
Yeah, that's something else we have to deal with. Okay, moving on then to consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you would prefer a separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the January 22nd, 2013 council meeting. B is payment of bills. C, financial statement for January. D, appointments to boards and commissions tonight. Appointing, I'm appointing Karen Rogulia to the Board of Appeals ET zoning as an alternate. E is licenses, one and/or two-year operators' licenses, as indicated in your packets. F, permits for banners, one is United Way from September 9th to 20th and October 7th to 25th, 2013. And the second permit request is for the UW Platteville homecoming from September 20th to October 7th, 2013. Is there any item there in which you would prefer a separate discussion and action?
Move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. There were no citizens' comments, observations, or petitions submitted tonight. Moving on to reports, committee reports. Museum Board, nothing to add. Tourism Committee, Becker is missing tonight. Community Safe Routes, Steiner?
Nothing to add.
Parks Forestry Recreation, Killian?
No additions.
Steiner Museum Task Force?
Nothing as well.
Okay. Under other reports, we have the Airport Financial Statement for January, the Water and Sewer Revenue and Expense Report for January, City Attorney itemized Statement for January, and Department Progress Reports. Are there any items there on which you have questions or would like to make comment? We'll be on to item seven. We have no action items tonight. It might be a first. Not spending any money, we're not making any laws, or we did earlier, never mind. Item eight is information and discussion. Item A is a resolution authorizing the sale of not to exceed 4.175 million in general obligation securities. Dwayne, do you want to make a brief comment on that?
Yes, in our, in our budget this year, there was a, certain amounts that were budgeted to be, to borrow for. After consultation with our Jeff Belangia, he recommended that we also borrow some that have balloon payments next year while the interest rates are really low, so the total amount then would be the $4,175,000.
So some of this we're just rolling over to get a better rate?
Yes.
Any questions on that one? Item B is ordinance creating section 22.0515, the wellhead protection overlay district for city well number five. We have a new well allowed at the industry park underneath where the water tower is and part of that process is a DNR requirement that we put in a wellhead protection district so that various noxious uses can't be done within a certain radius of that wellhead, things like dumping dry cleaner fluid onto the ground or having underground fuel tanks, things that would, would cause us water problems. And so that's what that is. Item C is an ordinance-
Have a question.
Go ahead.
Have the property owners within the wellhead protection district been apprised of this?
Yes.
And it has been sent to them?
Yes. Item C is an ordinance amending the official traffic map. This specifically is removal of school zone signs around OE Gray and St. Mary's School since they're no longer in operation as schools. Item D is an ordinance amending the official traffic map. This is a no parking sign for UW Platteville shuttle bus. They've been trying to do some pickups on the West Side. It seems to work better for them on Marquee Avenue than on the East Side on Chestnut, and they would like to have that designated as the pickup spot for the shuttle bus. Item E is transferring the Freudenreich Animal Care Trust Fund funds to the Community Foundation of Wisconsin. There's still some questions, I think, outstanding on that. Have we gotten any?
Yes. At our last meeting, we discussed this briefly. Council asked that I meet with Councilmember Killian. We did meet and I think we came to an understanding that we would prefer that the grant be made to the city of Platteville and that the city would manage the received grant on an annual basis and allow the committee to make the decisions as to where it's spent. I've contacted Southern Wisconsin, the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin, and they are very open to that, so they're going to be sending me new documentation.
It'll help us retain local control of what happens with that money. Not that it necessarily would have been a problem to begin with, but it guarantees that. Item F is to designate $8,502.41 of art board funds to some place.
Yeah, and I do have ideas for designating the funds. Over the weekend, I did go through my desk and I did find a letter from the Platteville Arts Board dated February 15th, 2008, to the then-city manager David Burner regarding the Platteville Municipal Auditorium. And I've got copies for all the council members. I will give it to you afterwards. But it's basically saying they're asking, asking the city council, city manager for support of, financial support for updating the auditorium. So that being said, what I'd like to do is designate, divide the 8,502 and designate $1,000 to Roundtree Gallery Board, $1,000 to the Tourism Committee to be used for arts and cultural events, and $1,000 to what Larry had suggested to- to buy art pieces for City Hall. And I would ask that it be local artists. And then, the remaining $5,502.41 to go to, help to update the city auditorium. The larger amount to the auditorium, because it's a huge goal. And ideally, if we, if the, if the committee, the friends of the auditorium committee can get the sound and acoustics done this year, it certainly makes, each year, we're hoping to do one more thing. And it does have the potential to bring in more revenue for the city to rent it out.
Other comments on that?
One, for me. How can we rent it out if we can't keep the furnace running?
Wouldn't you...
The furnace isn't on down there?
Well, we've had troubles with it this winter, and that heats the whole place.
I'm always aware of one behind stage, it's always hot. I don't know.
Is that right?
The furnace has gone out twice this winter.
Well, the whole building.
The whole building, yeah.
Jack Lidkey's asked to speak on this, so Jack, if you'd come forward and do the best we can here again. I mean, he's serving double duty tonight.
Thank you. When the Main Street Program became aware of the Arts Board money being allocated to other projects, it was the desire of our board to have me speak about a couple of things that are going on in Main Street that you may or may not be aware of, that directly relate to art projects. And one of those is in regard to audio. It's the Music in the Park Program. And what we have been able to do is, when the Cushman family was able to raise some money for the memory of their passing of their mother last year, they donated some of that money to permanent benches in the park in reflection of the family's long history in connection with Music in the Park. But they also had some funds left over, which they have decided to put into an endowment situation. And Main Street is going to help raise additional funds, because you need to get, reach a certain level before it becomes an endowment status. And what we would like to do is to call upon the city to take a look at allocating some of these funds to that endeavor for the endowment, because we have matching funds then that we can make this endowment grow with. Whatever that amount is, is up to the individuals on the council, but we would like you to consider that. Another art project that is ongoing downtown is, we are, we have written a grant, and we are going to restore the Farmer's Market mural on the back of the Garvey's Station. It has to be a different type of application. You just can't paint on that building anymore. So, not only is that an art project that's going to be restored, but we have had other contacts for other mural projects. One on the side of the Miners' Bistro on the corner of Main and Second Street. They've indicated they would take a mural on the side of that building, and also the owners of the Driftless Market Building. And those would then create an opportunity for an art, a start of an art walk that we could put a brochure out for visitors coming to our city to look at art projects. In addition to that, last night, the Subcommittee, the Sustainability Committee, which is a Subcommittee of our design group, selected three functional art pieces for bike racks that will be located in the downtown area. And these are really artist-designed and produced. And some of them have, or one of them at least has a historic character. It's an old bike rendition. So, what we're trying to do is build an art presentation in the downtown area that would, in fact, allow visitors to come to the city and to stay a little bit longer as they did this art walk, whether they're looking at the murals or actual functional art pieces in the downtown area. And so, we'd look to the council, maybe to consider that as recipient of some of these funds. Now, they would go to the Main Street Program, but we would designate them for art projects in the area, as I'm assuming that was the original intent for the funds going to the Arts Board to begin with.
Do you have drawings of those, Jack?
The racks? Yes, I don't have them with me, but we have, after last night, we, the committee passed on those. And we had raised grant money for those three, but for two of them. And then, the Main Street Program had grant money left over for the third one that we're going to put in place. And it, as I said, is just the start. We'd like to get eventually art pieces that, like the police station with the council's approval, or at the fire station, so that we actually have an art presence that extends. The university has a great presence on campus, but it doesn't extend down into the community the way we'd like it to. It's been talked about for years, but actually Heidi at Driftless Market was the driving force behind getting the actual action done on this. And so, I would applaud her for taking the ball and really running with this thing and getting it done. The real impetus here, I think, for you to consider is that if we can develop this art walk, we can actually give visitors to our cities, tourists, something more to convince them to stay longer here. So, the economy of the community really benefits from that. So, we'll take it all, or whatever you would like.
On that, that first item, you were talking about the endowment, Jack?
Yes.
You said that you have to have a certain amount of funds to start an endowment. How far away are you from that, do you know?
They have, right now, probably half of what they need to get to. This is not a one-year program. And what we're really looking at here is, each year, we've tried to have local acts who actually contribute a lot on their own. They're not getting paid what they normally get paid for a gig for two hours in the park. And so, you know, we're slowly starting to see some of the escalation costs in that. And we're able to raise additional funds for that. And the city in the past has contributed part of that support for that program, actually turned over a year, a few years ago, that program, so it could continue as a cultural event in Platteville. Main Street said we would take it over, and you have funded that partially for the last couple of years. But what we want to do is make sure that that continues on for years in advance. That's why we discussed the annuity approach with the Cushman family. I mean, their history goes all the way back. Their father helped to build the gazebo and fund the gazebo. So, that's what we'd like to continue on. Just have that as, rather than just taking the money that they gave us now and paying it out in one year, and it's gone.
Do you think you could have a report then for the Common Council packet for the next meeting? For the items that you just talked about?
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't have anything written for you, but certainly.
Thank you.
Do you have a list of yours, Patrice?
I have it, yeah.
Okay. Next what we'll do is we'll go into a little work session here to talk about brush pickup. Following that, we'll go into closed session. In fact, I'd like to have someone make a motion that following the work session, we will do that, and then we'll come out for adjournment.
What are you asking for? Yeah, I make a motion that after our work session, we go into closed section, session, per Wisconsin statute 1985, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And this would be city manager performance evaluation. And then, return to open session to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Take a five-minute break, and then start our work session.
It was attached to the, to this...